Yeah, we ready. The school board of Duval County School District is now convened in a special session. I wish to extend a warm welcome to everyone present. The Duval County School Board is here to set policy for the district that will improve student achievement and address other business items that require vote of the board. The management and day-to-day operations of the district are the responsibility of the superintendent. It is not the role of the board to make managerial or operational decisions. The board has policies and procedures in place to assist the superintendent in resolving management and operational issues. As a show of courtesy and respect for each other, we ask that all mobile phones be turned off and that no flash photography be used during the meeting. For those wishing to address the board during our public comment portion of the board meeting, please note that pursuant to board policy, we accept the speaker cards for this meeting until the public's time to start this meeting. Thank you for taking the time to join us and for your interest in the operation of the Duval County School District. I don't think we have any pro- do we have any speaker cards? Yes.
We need to add in the approval of board members via interactive video and telephone systems. Unfortunately, I missed it on your agenda.
So move.
Move by board member Hershey second.
Oh.
B- board member Joyce.
I'm over here and I just feel so out of place.
Any, any discussion on adding the three board members? All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Post, like actually you've approved four to zero adding the three members who are calling in.
Oh, I'm sorry, that was a comment?
No, we had to add those that are calling in first. Vice Chair Anderson, are you on?
I'm here, thank you.
Okay. Board member Smith Juarez, are you present?
I'm here, thank you.
Board member Willie, are you present?
I am here.
Thank you. Do we have any speaker cards? Seeing. None, none? Okay, we'll omit that. Approval of March twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty agenda. That the Duval County School Board approved the March twenty-fourth, twenty-twenty agenda as submitted on March twentieth, twenty-twenty with the following changes. Topics to be discussed, emergency deleg- delegation of authority and waivers of school board policies during COVID-nineteen. Item added. Topics to be discussed, waiver of board policies in response to COVID-nineteen. Item deleted. And. Topics to be discussed, delegation of authority to the superintendent item deleted. Uh. I ask for your motion, for a motion.
Uh, move the, move the item.
Move by board member Hershey second by board member Joyce. Any discussion? Uh, board member Anderson?
Yes.
Board member Grimes?
Yes.
Board member Hershey?
Yes.
Board member Jones, yes. Uh, board member Joyce?
Yes.
Smith Juarez?
Aye, yes.
Board member Willie?
Yes.
Like actually approve, uh, those agenda items seven to zero. Topics to be discussed, emergency procedures relating to school board meetings. Discussion. Somebody want to explain that policy?
Uh, through the, through the chair, could we, it's my understanding that Ms. Chastain has prepared this document and, uh, based upon her knowledge of Florida law and, uh, the operations of the district, could we have her, um, kind of give us a synopsis or walk through the highlights of the document that's before us?
Okay.
And also just make sure everyone by phone has checked their email and pulled up this document as well.
Alright, thank you.
Good morning, through the chair to the board members. Um, in cooperation with my colleagues around the state, I put together this agenda item to waive inconsistent portions of your board policy two-point-two-six by the executive order of the governor, I think it's, uh, twenty dash sixty-nine or whatever it was issued last Friday. Um, local boards are now expressly authorized to meet virtually or telephonically. So what this agenda item does is remove those inconsistent provisions of your policy two-point-two-six so that hereafter, um, we can meet virtually or through, um, telecommunications media. Um, this provides for opportunities for the public to join virtually. Um, also provides for a process by which public comment can be taken. Um, those two items are important because those are not waived and so we had to set up a system whereby the public can, I'm using air quotes, participate and the process by which, um, public comment can be taken. Um, it can be done a few ways, it can be done telephonically or it could be done, some districts are setting up an email address and I believe that's what we're doing where, um, interested members of the public can email their public comments by a time certain to this email address and then as the board meets virtually, those will be read into the record and become part of the record. Um, but that's in essence what this agenda item does so that during, um, the COVID-nineteen emergency, that's the duration of this um, as declared by national, state, or local authorities, um, this is how we will conduct our business hereafter. It'll also, um, free up and make us more flexible so that we can re-establish regular board meetings, have special meetings and emergency meetings as needed, so it gives us quite a bit of flexibility.
Okay, and this, this is for the duration of the emergency, right?
Yes, sir, yes, Mr. Chairman. Also, I'll work with the board office, we'll have to modify, um, our meeting notices just a little bit to be very clear with instructions as to how the public may join. You know, normally your meeting notice sets a location, well, that's not possible, so instead the notice will describe the virtual location and the process by which public comment can be provided. So those will be a few changes to our standard meeting notice in order to fully implement this.
Thank you. Any discussion? I ask for a motion for the emergency.
So move.
Moved by board member Hershey, second by board member Joyce. Call for your vote. Uh, board member Anderson?
Yes.
Board member Grimes?
Yes.
Board member Hershey?
Yes.
Warren Jones, yes. Board member Joyce?
Yes.
Smith Juarez?
Yes.
Board member Willie?
Yes.
Like actually you've approved the emergency seven to zero. Emergency procedures relating to school board meetings. That the Duval County School Board waive any inconsistent portions of policy two-point-two-six during the COVID-nineteen emergency to permit virtual meetings of the school board and provide for the public participation and public comment at the virtual meetings.
Mr. Chairman, that's the item you just approved, I think we're on.
Okay, I thought it was separate, I thought we was approving the emergency and then this. It was not two, two different separate actions?
Two separate actions, so I believe you just approved the, um, agenda item that establishes the virtual meetings and so now we are on the emergency delegation of authority, it's at the top of page four of your script. Thank you, sir.
Thank you. Item two, emergency delegation of authority and waivers of school board policies during COVID-nineteen. Discussion.
We need a motion.
Could we ask, could we read the, um, item into the record in the box and then, yes?
Emergency delegation of authority and waivers of school board policies during COVID-nineteen. That the Duval County School Board delegate authority to the superintendent and waive school board policies as described in the agenda item during the COVID-nineteen emergency for the purpose of protecting the health, safety, and welfare of students and families and district employees and their families while providing for continuity of operations of the district and compliance with all national, state, and local directives.
So move.
Thank you.
Motion by board member Hershey, second by board member Grimes. Any discussion?
Can we have Karen do an overview of this policy change as well?
Mr. Chairman, I, I just want to put my hand up, I don't mean to get in front of anybody.
Okay. Well, as soon as, soon as, uh, board member Anderson questions, I mean, uh, Joyce question is answered, I come back to you, thank you.
I'm sorry, what was the question? I would just like a brief ex- explanation of the whole, the change.
Thank you, good, good morning again, uh, through the chair to the board members. So, um, the, the agenda changed where I combined the delegation of authority and the waiver of board policies. Um, your policy manual provides for quite a bit of authority to the superintendent and even has an emergency um, policy where in the cases of the emergency, the superintendent is given broad powers. There was one idiosyncrasy in that policy where on, upon the superintendent's report to the board, that authority ends. So what, one thing that this agenda item does is it provides for the continuation of the superintendent's emergency powers through the duration of COVID-nineteen as determined by, um, national, state, or local authorities. Um, but also provides for the frequency of reports from the superintendent to the board and to be published on the website. Um, trying to balance the need for communication amid the emergency procedures that will happen, um, at least monthly. Um, and the first report would be Monday, May eleventh. Um, basically get us a few weeks into this as far as any updates. The policy then, or excuse me, the agenda item really is for the protection of the health, safety, and welfare of students and employees and everyone's families. Um, also to provide for continuity of operations of the district and to comply and implement directives of all jurisdictional authorities. Um. Broadly, the agenda item provides a specific contract authority, so there's a few adjustments and waivers, uh, to board policy. For example, if a contract was previously approved by the board, and I'll, I'll take for example, transportation, ordinarily those amendments would need to come back to the board. But what, um, this item does is it permits the administration to enter into amendments to existing contracts with a financial cap of a ten percent increase, um, to the original amount. It has to be, the amendment has to be signed off by legal, with me, um, the CFO, I'm thinking the availability of lawfully appropriated funds and procurement, just to make sure that we're still following the procurement code, which again has emergency procedures, but there may be other relevant issues. The other thing that this agenda item does is for policy seven-point-four-one, for new contracts, my, what I was thinking that instead of being, um, limited to seventy-five thousand dollars, that cap is now increased to a hundred thousand dollars and again, all of this is through the COVID emergency. Um, the policy also briefly addresses facilities. For example, all facility use agreements in policy nine-point-three-zero are suspended. You know, we're not using our facilities for, for the public to congregate. Um, it also provides for, I think at the March agenda, you waived the school attendance boundaries policies in five-point-four-four for, uh, potential boundary changes for several schools to be finished by April. That is now moved to June, so it's another waiver to recognize the circumstances that we're in. Um, presently, the, the district is in the process of renewing its property insurance for all of its facilities, but now that we're not having the April seventh regular board meeting, this agenda item approves the expenditure to bind coverage for our facilities. Just, that was something that needed to be renewed, um, and so this item takes care of that. Um, and the annual amount is two-point-six-two-nine million for the, the annual coverage. The item also, um, addresses, um, ratifies all items taken by the superintendent um, as to budget, personnel, and educational services. And again, the duration of this is through the COVID-nineteen, um, emergency that we're in. And now that we'll be able to meet telephonically, if other items arise that we need to address, we'll be more nimble and, and able to do that, but this initial agenda item is broadly trying to capture as many items as we can.
Alright.
I think Smith Juarez had a question?
Yeah, I, I was, they answered your question. Board member S- Smith Juarez?
Thank you, um, Chairman Jones, and good morning, everyone. Um, I understand and, and greatly appreciate that, uh, district staff, all of our staff, really, as you could guess, are adapting quickly and doing what they can to be responsive to the needs of public health as well as the educational needs of students and the operational needs of the district. Um, you know, that being said, I do think that it is important to note that the school board was emailed this information at nine oh four this morning, um, when our meeting began at nine. So I do have a number of questions that have arisen from quickly reading through, um, what has been put in front of us today. I do recognize and understand that we're in an unprecedented situation. Um, that being said, uh, the governance structure of school boards and the accountability to the public that we have as school board members, I think warrants a, a close look at, um, a, a waiver of policy and other, uh, normative practices that would be the broad sweeping. So, um, you know, first, um, with regard to the superintendent's exercise of, um, authority that would, uh, not be aligned to school board policy, right now, this particular waiver, um, would have a monthly report of those. Um, I, I would like to propose that we, um, ask for, you know, sort of a daily email, um, or heads up if there are board policies that are, um, you know, that, if, if the superintendent sees the needs to operate outside of school board policies. Um, and then I, I would like to see us, and, and forgive me, I read through it quickly and was not able to make a, a deliberate note of where the, um, the reference is, but I'd like to have weekly reports to the school board. I think the first report coming May eleventh, um, i- is quite a while between, we're now at March the twenty-fourth. So, um, I, I know that staff will be documenting as all of these things happen and so sending a, a weekly update to the board, I think, is, is warranted, um, in, in, in my opinion. Um, so I, I'll kind of make those suggestions now and then come back, uh, to, to any particular motion. Um, and then, um, in the contracting authority, um, under A-one, the superintendent is authorized to enter into any amendment um, that would not exceed ten percent of the previously approved contract amount. Um, again, I'll, I'll make particular motion when I come back to these things, but I think given that, um, A-two, uh, would give authority for contracts of a hundred thousand dollars or not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars, um, which I, I will remind the board, we have had this threshold previously, we changed policy, uh, nine-point-one-four. Uh, I think I have that policy correct, but, uh, the policy that delegates authority to the superintendent for certain contracts. Um, the board has in recent years changed that threshold amount, but we have operated at a hundred thousand dollars before, so I can certainly understand that need. Um, that being said, I'd like to see, um, in, in A-one, not to exceed ten percent or a hundred thousand dollars, whichever is less, um, just to have those two items complement each other, uh, so that, that the board is really giving that hundred thousand dollars, uh, threshold to both of those items. Um, and then, as we move into facilities, um, and, and I'm sort of going through these, the laundry list, I'll stop after a couple questions in a minute. Um, but as we move into facilities, um, B-two, the school attendance boundaries, I had previously, uh, raised with the board my concerns about making changes so late, um, in the year when we thought it might be April. Now that we're thinking it might be June, um, you know, I would again raise concern, um, especially when normalcy has been disrupted to the extent that it has in our school communities now. I think, uh, schools and teachers and, and parents and families are doing an incredible job to maintain routine and normalcy, um, that, that we can with the interest of public health, but, um, you know, just continue to have some concerns here. One question through the chair to the superintendent. Um, John Love and Long Branch Elementary Schools, um, has their A committee completed their recommendations?
Through the chair to Ms. Smith Juarez, yes.
Is there anything that is causing cause or reservation from you, um, for moving forward with that particular recommendation given that all of the policy requirements have been satisfied and the committee has made its recommendation?
Through the chair to Ms. Smith Juarez, there's nothing given me cause for concern in any of the three. So whether it's John Love in Long Branch or Carter G. Woodson and St. Clair Evans or Brentwood, um, two of the three have completed their recommendations. Uh, Brentwood was the only one that we had one last meeting and it occurred, it was to occur March nineteenth, but, uh, the events prevented that meeting from happening.
Sure, and so.
If there was any one, it would just be that one.
Oh, go ahead, I'm sorry.
So if there was any one situation that, you know, we might give consideration that, oh, we'll put this off, would be, would be the Brentwood to, uh, North Shore.
Okay. Um, so, so knowing that the A committees have completed their work, that the superintendent could make recommendations to the board, um, on, in, in those two cases and that we do have some provision for public comment and certainly can use, um, you know, remote communication tools for those communities, um, I, I think that we as a board should consider those two, um, and, and moving forward with those two and then, um, you know, maybe considering, uh, Brentwood separately, given that their A committee has not completed their meeting, um, and, and thinking about postponing that decision, um, until the, the subsequent school year when that A committee can come back and, and relook at, um, what's happening there. Um, then, um, moving into, um, C-three. Um, from what I see here, coverage is effective April eighth. Um, the, the school board has not received a copy of the proposal or, um, the, the contract and, and we haven't been able to ask questions about how our current operations might affect this particular policy or, or what, what might we need to take into consideration given the current landscape? And I'm not sure that, um, you know, whether or not we have staff present or we even have the opportunity to sort of vet this particular item as we just have a quick paragraph, um, on, you know, what is, uh, uh, sizable cost and, and a particularly, um, you know, that this contract could, could need to contemplate, um, some of what we're doing right now. Um, I know that there, as, as buildings are changing their use, that insurance is also changing, um, how they're looking at that use and so not knowing the time period or, you know, what may happen, it might be of us to examine this a little closely. So, um, again, I'm going to hold any kind of motions or amendments, but, um, given that this coverage is effective April eighth, through the chair to the superintendent, um, what, what is the date by which the district needs to, uh, sign and effectuate the policy in order to have continuous coverage?
I'm not sure I heard a question.
Could you clarify that question?
I didn't hear it.
Yes.
Well, the question is, I think, do we need to continue the insurance at the current level because of the use of the buildings at this time? Is that what?
No, what I, what I'm asking is what date do we need to, um, sign this particular contract for the policy in order to have continuous coverage so that we don't, we don't have an interruption of coverage? What's the last possible date we can move forward with the contract?
Ms. Chair, I think Ms. Chastain wants to.
I'm, I'm, to the chair to Ms. Smith Juarez, Stan, Jen, um, who handles this is coming downstairs. So we'll answer.
We have someone coming down to answer that question. Uh, do you, I, I have four concerns that you expressed, is there any more?
Yes, um, I have two others. Um, item C, budget, uh, we are being asked to ratify all prior actions taken by the superintendent, um, understanding that these are based on directives from the Florida Department of Education and the Office of the Governor, but we've received no, that I, that I'm aware of, please correct me if I'm wrong, but we've received no supporting documentation of what these costs have been or what the implications to our budget have been or which line items would be affected by these decisions. And so, um, you know, I'm, I, I'm a little bit uncomfortable being asked to ratify prior actions when I'm not certain what those, what would be classified under these prior actions and what the cost and implications to the budget would be.
Okay.
Um, and then also as it relates to personnel, the, um, I, I know this, this talks about, um, the Department of Education, the Florida Department of Education and the Office of the Governor, um, and the deployment of district personnel. We also have a local order from our mayor regarding work from home. Um, and so just wanted to ask through the chair to the superintendent, um, what, how are we implementing the local work from home order and, um, you know, kind of from, from the board standpoint and, well, I'll ask that first. Through, through the chair to the superintendent, um, how are we implementing the mayor's work from home order?
Through the chair to Ms. Smith Juarez, I've spoken to the mayor and it is up to the organization to make that determination. And any position that their core job can be done from home, we are allowing them to work from home. If their core position cannot be done from home and it must be done, whether it's here at the district or at a, a work location, then those individuals will continue to report to work.
Okay, but we've reevaluated based on what previous directions the district staff was in terms of what, what can be done from home?
Through the chair to Ms. Smith Juarez, yes, we've, we've evaluated all positions.
And if you had.
Okay.
And coming into the building this morning, there were a number of employees, uh, taking files home that were going to be working from, from home, so I noticed that myself this morning. So I, I.
Okay.
Glad to see that we are allowing more employees to work from home that can, who can work from home.
Yeah, I, I agree and appreciate the, the superintendent and, and staff taking swift action to make sure that folks who can are working from home. Um, through the chair to Ms. Chastain, uh, Would it behoove us to include local orders in that item D?
Through the chair to Board Member Smith-Warees. We could, but I don't think it's necessary because if you look at the recommendation, it says continue continuity of operations of the district in compliance with all national, state and local directives. So I believe that any local directives are really included throughout the entire agenda item.
Okay, okay. So I'm, I'm sorry, I'm trying to follow you. So you were referencing at the open of the document, it includes local?
Through the chair to Board Member Smith-Warees, yes.
Got it, okay, I see it in item one. Okay, so that, that kind of concludes the list of concerns that I have. I'll listen to other board members if there is any other discussion. And then chairman, I'd ask that I be recognized for a second time to potentially bring forward some amendments or to divide certain parts of the item once other board members have had a chance to weigh in.
All right, thank you, Board Member Smith-Warees. We do have someone here to answer the question about the insurance. I want to have him to come forward and identify yourself for the record and.
I'm Stan Jurick, I'm the district risk manager.
Board Member Smith-Warees had a question about what's the latest date that we could sign the contract for insurance coverage on all school board buildings?
Sir, that would be April eighth.
Board Member.
I'm sorry, I can't.
He said the date would be April the eighth.
Okay. In that case, I might suggest that the board be provided some additional information and documentation as to this particular contract. And one follow-up question would be that, you know, has district staff reached out to our insurer to review and contemplate the current use of our buildings versus the typical use of our buildings? And if there is any potential savings or any recommended changes in coverage based on our current use?
Through the chair, no, I have not reached out to them with that discussion, but I can do so.
Thank you. Through the chair to the superintendent, I'd like to make a board member request that we. I'd like to ask the question if we could examine this particular contract given the current pandemic environment?
Through the chair, we can examine it, but it still does not remove the requirement for it to be paid by April eighth or enacted by April eighth.
Sure, all right, I can understand that.
And if, I'm sure that information will be provided to all seven board members. But it doesn't hurt to review and look at if there's any cost savings that we could realize in that area would be great.
Yes, sir, I'll take a look at it.
All right, thank you. Board Member Hershey?
I would just like to say thank you to Ms. Chastain. It was beneficial to me to be on the Florida School Board Association conference call. I shared that information about that conference call with board members after having talked to Chairman Jones and Ms. Chastain, so I know that you were busy over the weekend putting this together. I do have one question though for the superintendent as it pertains to contracts. I know it wasn't specifically in here, but I was thinking about the multiple contracts we have with various nonprofits whom we, you know, are in a contract with and actually pay for services. Many of them are mentoring or other support services for students. What is being done with those contracts? How are they being evaluated? And is there going to be a cost savings there due to the current situation? And perhaps the nonprofits inability to be able to provide services as originally agreed to?
Through the chair to Board Member Hershey, right now, all of those contracts are kind of frozen until we've had an opportunity to go through every single contract. We are not allowing individuals such as mentoring. We're not allowing them to do this until we had Duval Home Room up and running and we saw what was the impact of running the system with this high volume use. So next, probably in the, I know that Dr. Krisner has been reviewing contracts that relate to her side of the house and Ms. Young has been reviewing contracts that are on, that are operational. The number one contract that we are trying to work through is our contract with transportation, the different transportation providers. That is sort of the number one contract that's having issues. Because we're not utilizing the amount, the number of buses that we would be utilizing if we were having normal school. And we are also reviewing our custodial contract. And we think our food service contract is fine in its current format. But most of our contracts, if we're not getting the service, we're not paying. So we reviewed our ESS contract. So the contracts we've spent an enormous amount of time reviewing are our high-ticket contracts. Now we'll start reviewing the, I don't want to call them lower ticket, but contracts that would have a minimal impact to, to our budget. The federal contracts, we are monitoring those because they have different set of rules based on, again, if you're not delivering the service, then we believe then we, we're, I don't want to say we're not obligated, I believe we are not obligated to pay the, whether it's a vendor or the organization that is, that would have been providing that service.
Through the chair, I have one more question just for clarification. And hopefully that may help answer some of Board Member Smith-Warees's questions. But for example, where it says new contracts not to exceed a hundred thousand dollars, certainly. I'm thinking as we went to a virtual platform, which was unplanned for, we didn't know it was coming. Were there, could you give us some examples of perhaps some items that may have needed to be purchased or some decisions you may have had to make within like seventy-two hours, I think it was, to get this off the ground, just to help us understand what some of those new contracts might be?
Through the chair to Board Member Hershey, a new contract was we had to outsource some printing. We couldn't get it all done internally. However, that printing was done within my authority, within the authority I had. But if, we didn't know whether it was going to fall within my authority, but it did. So that's something we had to make a decision within seventy-two hours if we had any intention of being able to roll out packets on Monday. I would say that every single time someone said, well, we need to buy, the first question out of my mouth is, is this within my authority? Let's make sure we're still following board policy. I do not believe we've done anything that required, that I went outside of any board policy or it was my authority. We did have one question about a particular item that, that we did purchase. But in going through the review, it was a commodity. Therefore, it fell within the guidelines. It would show up on the report as we normally report commodities.
I have one more, one more follow-up. So right now, I believe superintendent's authority is at seventy-five thousand. Is that?
Through the chair, that is correct.
And so through the chair to Ms. Chastain, I think you mentioned it early on, but could you just explain why you landed with that number for this recommendation?
Through the chair to Board Member Hershey, a few reasons to afford a little bit more flexibility in case it's needed. I don't think it would generate if it's needed. I don't think it would generate that much extra activity to be signed by the superintendent and reported under policy seven point four one. Also to, that was basically the reason. And previously, there was a hundred thousand dollar authority as well.
But you're recommending this only in the event of this emergency? And then after the emergency has subsided, then it would automatically go back to the seventy-five thousand?
Through the chair to Board Member Hershey, correct. Without any further action of the board, if this item is approved as written upon the termination of the COVID-19 emergency as it's defined in the agenda item, all of this ends.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Board Member Anderson? Joyce?
My question through the chair to Ms. Chastain is we are dealing with the federal, state and local authorities. And so what constitutes the end of the crisis? Does the mayor or the president or the governor or all three? So could you?
Through the chair to Board Member Joyce, I think it depends on the situation. I don't know how to exactly answer that in the absence of specific facts. But I think, I think it'll be pretty clear once we're in the all-clear that this ends.
Thank you. I was going, Madam Superintendent?
Through the chair, just as a recommendation and Ms. Chastain can chime in. I am fine with it to June thirtieth, twenty twenty. That's the end of the fiscal year and then it can be reevaluated at that time. So that this gives a very definite end date. The emergency may not be over, but it gives an end date of where, where we would come back before the board. If that is agreeable with Ms. Chastain.
Through the, through the chair and to the board members, if that's agreeable, the proposed amendment could be the earlier of the end of the COVID-19 emergency or June thirtieth, twenty twenty, whichever occurs first. And I think what Dr. Green is saying, that is if June thirtieth, twenty twenty comes first, there'll be so much more experience by that point that if different recommendations need to be made, we can, based on that information, act at that time. Does that make sense?
Does someone want to offer that amendment?
So move.
Who, by Board Member Hershey, second by Board Member Joyce? Any discussion on the amendment to change the language to June thirtieth or the, the end of COVID-19, whichever comes first? All in favor, say aye?
Aye.
I'm sorry, let me go down the road. Anderson?
Aye.
Rhimes?
Aye, aye.
Hershey?
Aye.
Jones, aye. Joyce?
Aye.
Smith-Warees?
Aye.
Board Member Willie? That amendment is adopted seven to zero. Board Member Anderson, do you have any comments before we come back to Board Member Smith-Warees's concerns?
I, thank you. I was not keeping a list of Board Members' concerns to address them individually. I will say I appreciate the superintendent's willingness to come back and address this at June thirtieth if the emergency has not been lifted. I also agree with Board Member Smith-Warees's recommendation that we see something more frequently than monthly. Especially as it pertains to some of these items that we're waving, just so that we have a summary as, as staff are keeping notes that it comes to us. I'm okay with something relatively informal, just so that we have a sense of keeping up with what is, what's going on. I think those are the two that really stuck out for me that I would like to look at more closely.
All right, thank you. Board Member Willie, any thoughts?
No, I mean, the conversation is robust. I was, I think we just have to be aware of it's such a fluid situation and just making sure we're staying above that. And I appreciate Board Member Joyce's question too when it comes to like which authority and which level are there? Because that was, that was the question that I was going to pose as well. But I really appreciate this conversation.
All right, thank you. Okay, going back to item one that Smith-Warees raised about weekly reports of, and Superintendent.
Through the, through the chair to, well, I just addressed the entire board. I would prefer bi-weekly. One, staff are doing very different things than what we've done in the past. And the fact that many of them are working from home, that connection is not as quickly as, oh, I just go downstairs or I just, I, I. The, the amount of things that we are doing today. There are good days when I remember what day it is. I just think weekly would be too much of a strain on staff. One, because everybody, almost everyone's working remotely. And to gather that information and make sure, one, I don't, I don't want to not do things correctly. And it does take time for Ms. Bagley's department to really comb through what expenditures were made. As I stated, at this point, we have not done anything outside of our normal school board policy. And I, well, as someone said, this is so fluid, I don't see anything that we would be doing that would be considerably concerning. The only thing, as I stated, we have a transportation contract that we need. And when I say transportation, I'm talking about all of the entities we're working with. And the concern for our custodial contract and, and how we will alter that contract. And in my opinion, it wouldn't be altering it to more. We're looking, trying to alter to, to bring it down. And how will we move forward with that? So I would prefer, if possible, every two weeks, we would post those reports.
Board Member Smith-Warees, any comments?
Yes, I kind of appreciate that, you know, staff working remotely does change the workflow and that there are lots of moving parts to what's happening that are working as quickly as they can, making informed decisions. And maybe it would be helpful, you know, for me to clarify that I wouldn't expect those weekly reports, those weekly reports would be to include any affirmative decisions that had been made in the, not necessarily the prior seven days. I mean, we could, we could figure out what the lag time was if there was a decision made afternoon prior to whenever the report was made. But, you know, I, I do think that as decisions are made and things are executed by district staff, that asking for some information to come to the board if in fact is contrary to, and I use that term slightly, if it would require a waiver of board policy, I don't think anybody's doing anything that, you know, is intentionally in the face of board policy. It's just to keep normal operations going and not lagging. But I would feel most comfortable with more information than less. To Board Member Anderson's point, it can be, you know, kind of a formalized, finalized and a, you know, to be formalized, finalized each week if there are things that don't have all of the information yet included. But for me, I would feel more comfortable to know what's happening on a more regular interval than every two weeks. I mean, things are changing day by day and I know staff is working to adapt to those in a heroic way. But to report governance structure, we need that information myself.
Are you saying that weekly reports, if board policy is not followed? Or you just, are you?
Yes. Yeah, I'm saying, because this is particular to a waiver of board policy is how I'm reading this. And forgive me, let me get back to that particular portion. So yes, this would be anything that was particular to what policy three point two seven would define as emergency action and that that report would then not, you know, preclude the continuation of that waiver. But that, yes, the. Um, but that, yes, the reports would include anything that, uh, would have previous to this waiver, presuming it moves forward today, have required a waiver of the Board. Does that helpful, Superintendent? Does that make sense?
Through the Chair, and it might be contrary to what Ms. Chastain, I would much rather you not approve it. Because who, I don't, I don't, a lot of purchasing still takes place, and it's normal. Now we would be trying to comb out, well, what didn't quite follow, and, and we need to do a report. I would just much rather you not approve that section than to say every week. Because, um, I'm very conscientious about what I ask staff to do, and very conscientious about making sure I keep the Board informed. Uh, I, I like to think I try to over-communicate, but the reporting, I just don't believe we can do that because so many people are working remotely, and the time of getting it. So I, I would just prefer that you don't approve that particular section.
Board Member Hershey?
I, I would like to, um, if it's okay with the Chair, have Ms. Chastain weigh in on that. Uh, only because, uh, I was on two conference calls with the Florida School Board Association on Friday. Uh, one at eight o'clock in the morning, and the other at four o'clock in the afternoon. And, uh, when discussion came up about emergency, um, powers for superintendents, one of the, um, specific items that was discussed in both of those meetings and identified as is, was giving a timeline for the superintendent to report back. And I'm wondering if perhaps that's why Ms. Chastain originally made it monthly versus, uh, weekly or bi-weekly. So could, could she weigh in, please?
Uh, good morning. Through the Chair to the Board members, um, yes, I'm aware of the FSBA guidance to provide a means in, in these times of remoteness, uh, continuing some form of communication. Um, I, I'm the one who came up with monthly. I'm trying to balance the completely different way of work for district employees and the need to communicate, and that at a minimum, there'd be monthly reports if the superintendent or the administration is providing reports more frequently, both to the Board members and posted on the website to the public, which I think is happening anyway, because the public needs direction as to, you know, things like that. Um, simply trying to put some terms and conditions around this. And, um, I selected monthly, trying to balance the, the two, understanding that it could happen more frequently. But at a minimum, it happened at least in a summative fashion, monthly.
So, for example, what I did, having, uh, heard last night about five o'clock, the, the mayor's announcement, um, I believe shortly after that, I emailed Dr. Green, or sent her a text message, asking her what we were doing specifically, and got a response. I did not copy the board, but I did, I, I know it was the end of the day when I communicated with Dr. Green, and she did get back with me, um, because I did ask specifically about that. Um, and I share that because I think that as, um, items arise like that, and we want to know what our response is, um, you know, I think if, I have found that the superintendent has responded, um, to those questions. And so that was not like a formal report, but that was something that was on my radar and a concern to me. So therefore, I reached out to the superintendent, and she responded immediately, um, to me. So, uh, and I didn't need that in the form of report. Um, if we didn't have a plan, I would have been concerned. But I just share that as well, is that I've found that as things arise that hit my radar from, from constituents, or, uh, like I said, just hearing that last night from the mayor, um, and knowing that we had more cars in the parking lot, uh, earlier, uh, last week, and, and even yesterday than today, um, it was helpful to know that the, the superintendent did respond promptly. So thank you, Ms. Chastain.
Thank you, Madam. Former Chair, thank you for that. Now, FSBA contact, thank you for the information. I, um, perhaps the, the lead language as is, and with the understanding that if possible, a, a report every two weeks and leave that to the discretion of the superintendent, and because these are uncertain times, and that we have a number of employees who are working remotely, and it may be difficult to get it every two weeks, but at least every month we get it, if possible. Uh, I think the superintendent's heard the concerns, uh, from both, uh, Board Member Smith Juarez and Anderson, that would, they would like to have it more frequently. Uh, so I don't know if somebody want to offer a motion, or we want to move on.
Chairman? Just recommend keeping it as currently written, but I heard somebody else jumping in, so.
Who's that?
Uh, Chairman, this is Board Member Smith Juarez. Um, I would, uh, offer an amendment to, um, Section Two, uh, or, I guess it's under the, the description, number two, um, paragraph two. Um, it looks like it's on, it's beginning on page eight. Um, the superintendent shall provide, uh, then, we all know what shall means. The, the superintendent shall provide a bi-weekly report to the School Board of the actions taken by the superintendent during the COVID- nineteen emergency. Um, superintendent, strike monthly, um, and insert bi-weekly report shall include the financial impact as can be reasonably determined for the reporting period. To inform the public, this strike monthly add bi-weekly report shall also be posted on the district's webpage. The strike monthly add bi-weekly report shall be provided by the, by, well, uh, it shall be provided every two weeks. Um, beginning, forgive me, I'm looking at a calendar, um, beginning April tenth, um, and shall include information, um, for the preceding two weeks. Um, so, and, and Ms. Chastain helped me here, but I'm, I'm trying to write it so that the April tenth report would cover the time period from March twenty-third to April third. So that there's a week for the report preparation that would not be covered by the report.
Okay.
Uh, through the Chair, so, uh, Board Member Smith Juarez, I think what you're saying is that there's a week lag. So it, it would look three weeks back, but cover Weeks One and Two. And, and in other words, it wouldn't be, if the first report is due April tenth, it would not cover Monday, April sixth, through Friday, April tenth. Is that correct?
Correct, correct.
Okay.
Mr. Chair.
There is a motion. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Hershey, discussion. Board Member Grimes?
Um, I guess, what, so exactly what is going to be put in this, in this, um, report?
The question is, what are you looking to be included in the report, Smith Juarez? That was from Board Member Grimes.
Oh, to, to me, or to the superintendent?
Um, mostly you, because you're the one that is, uh, you're the one that's asking for it, so.
Yeah, um, so, um, and forgive me, I'm, uh, a monthly report to the School, or excuse me, a bi-weekly report to the School Board of the actions taken, so it would include the actions taken by the superintendent during the COVID- nineteen emergency, um, including the financial impact as reasonably as can be determined for the reporting period. So actions taken, um, and the financial impact that's known at the time. And I would leave that to the discretion of the superintendent as to the, um, the, the breadth of what is reported. I mean, not down to every last detail, but, you know, a general overview of any, um, actions taken that would be particular, um, to the superintendent's authority, just kind of a summary of operations and, and delivery.
Ms. Chastain wants to respond. Ms. Chastain?
Thank you. Uh, through the Chair and to the Board members, so a simple example of what could be included in the reporting period if this agenda item is approved, is that here are the contract amendments we entered into, um, for those contracts that were previously approved by the Board, but you delegated to the administration the ability to enter into amendments. Um, for example, if transportation is modified and it meets within the delegated authority, that would be reported out. Um, here are the contracts that were, the new contracts that were executed under Policy seven point four one that are between seventy-five thousand dollars and a hundred, because it's within the, the waiver. So that would be an example. Um, here are, uh, the MOUs that we've entered into with, um, collective bargaining units and things like that. So those types of concrete activities, you know, here are the things that we've done to get things in place, you know, during this two-week, if the amendment passes this reporting period, that type of thing.
Okay. All right, thank you. Any other questions?
Can I, um?
Ms. Grimes?
So, the, I, I heard the superintendent say that you'd rather us do it differently. Can you say that again?
Through the Chair to Ms. Grimes, I was saying, if, if you, if bi-weekly was not enough, and that if you wanted it every week, I'd just rather you vote this particular section down, because people are working remotely, and our way of work has completely changed. And I think our timeline of getting information, we have to alter. Because you may be on a phone, I may not be today, because we're sitting here, I can just go walk to that person and say, hey, this is what I need. Well, if you're working remotely, and you're on the, a phone, you're in a phone conference meeting, I can't talk to you. I can't get what I need from you at that moment. And it just means we have to be more patient with, uh, getting information from our employees, or from, uh, whether it's cabinet or other administrators, it just will take a while. And that was my concern about saying weekly. And weekly was trying to work on a week that's over, and constantly moving through this, um, unique situation. So, it, bi-weekly is, is what I was requesting.
Is that, that's where we are?
Yes. The motion is for bi-weekly reporting. And there's a motion and a second. Any more discussion?
I, I'd like to weigh in. Um,
Board Member Joyce?
I, I, first of all, I want to just thank Dr. Green for, um, keeping us informed. You've done a tremendous job of that, I believe. Um, I also, with Board Members Smith Juarez and Anderson, was a little concerned about the length of the monthly, um, report, um, just not feeling like you're not in the know, and not know, knowing what's going on. But, um, I don't want to put too much of a burden on the district. Um, so, you know, I just want to put this out there, instead of bi-weekly, could we do bi-monthly? Would that be easier on the district, or is bi-weekly perfectly fine with you?
Through the Chair to Ms. Joyce, bi-weekly is fine.
Okay, thank you so much.
I, I think, I would not support bi-monthly, having been on that conference call with the Florida School Board Association. Um, I, I think that part of that was, um, even though this is a crisis, and our superintendent has demonstrated excellence, um, in, um, change management, which I'm studying in class right now. This is a nonlinear example of change. I, I, I think that at the end of the day, the public still holds us accountable. And, um, I was fine with monthly, but if the superintendent's fine with bi-weekly, I think that's good. I think bi-monthly, uh, puts the Board at risk.
Thank you. Any other discussion?
Chair Jones?
Yes.
Um, I, I, just for clarification, I, my understanding of Board Member Joyce's recommendation is, is bi-monthly is the twice a month, not the every other month recommendation, like a first and a fifteenth. Um, rather than an every two weeks, that can get a little, um, hairy as far as dates. But bi-weekly is fine with me, if that, if that is good with the superintendent. I think that part of the reason why it's important for us to be able to get this information more frequently than monthly, um, is the, the part about making this available to the community, that there are expenses and costs associated with having to, um, navigate through this time of crisis. And we're also moving into the budgeting season. We're going to be getting, um, I hope, at some point, um, back to regular business. And, um, you know, being able to make decisions about what is a necessary expenditure now, and how that will impact us moving into the next school year is important. So, um, for me, being able to stay up to date, for the community being able to stay up to date, I think it helps us keep, um, on top of the evolving situation. We know that things are changing so rapidly. So I appreciate the superintendent's flexibility. Um, and, and I recognize the extra burden that this will put on, on staff to, to have to track all of these things, but I do appreciate it. Um, can I ask a question really quickly also? Will we be having governance today?
Well, yeah, we have governance. We, we have a motion and a second right now.
Okay, I just want to make sure that I won't tie this other piece into this conversation. I'll wait till governance. Um, I appreciate it. I'm happy to support a bi, a bi-weekly, um, or every two weeks, um, amendment.
Okay, thank you. Any other comments? We have a motion and a second. All in favor? Board Member Anderson?
Yes.
Board Member Grimes?
Yes.
Board Member Hershey?
Yes.
Jones, yes. Joyce?
Yes.
Smith Juarez?
Yes.
Board Member Willie? Board Men, Board Member Willie, are you still there?
Yes, yes, I'm, yes.
I thought you was changing diapers there for a minute, okay. All right. By actually, you've adopted the Amendment seven to zero. So changed from monthly to bi-weekly. The second item that Smith Juarez brought up was a, uh, ten percent, a hundred thousand dollar, I think we addressed that already. Is that correct? Smith Juarez?
Uh, no, I don't believe so. So, um, under Number Two, um, at the one, um, kind of reading through that paragraph, uh,
I think your, your, your amendment was to make it ten percent, a hundred thousand dollars with whichever.
Whichever is less.
Less.
Whichever is less, um, for Section One.
Um, and Board members, to be clear, that is the section where, if approved, you're delegating authority to the superintendent to amend existing contracts that those amendments would otherwise require Board approval. So, uh, an example would be transportation. That came to the Board, any amendment would have to come back to the Board. This delegation of authority would be limited for signature authority to the superintendent, um, if the change is.
Less than a hundred thousand?
Less than a hundred thousand, or ten percent, whichever is less.
Is that, that's not the current language, though?
The current language is simply ten percent.
Okay, this would amend that current language, correct? All right. You want to offer that motion?
Uh, two, two moves.
Moved by Board Member Smith Juarez. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Board Member Anderson. Discussion. Hearing none. Uh, Board Member Anderson?
Yes.
Grimes?
Yes.
Hershey?
Yes.
Jones, yes. Joyce?
Yes.
Smith-Wares?
Yes.
Board Member Willie? Board Member Willie?
Yeah, I'm a, yeah.
Okay. By your action, you approve the amendment seven to zero. Uh, the third item was the ACE process that you brought up. And I guess the superintendent, you want to respond to?
Through the chair, to the board, it is still my request to, um, move this, ask for the waiver to be moved to the month of June. Uh, even if we come back and make a decision at Brentwood, we should, um, hold off. We still need that time and it's a twenty-eight day requirement. And we would, at this point, we, we will not be able to meet that requirement. So no matter what, it has to be, the waiver has to move it so that we can have it in June.
The waiver is the June, the tenth?
I think we just say the month of June.
Month of June.
We, we...
That is correct.
We do not, the board has not set meetings, so we just say the month of June.
Okay. Board Member Smith, Smith-Wares, did you hear the superintendent's concerns?
Thank you. Thank you. Yeah, understanding that, um, we, we would have to, um, post a, a twenty-eight day, um, notice to the public through the chair, to legal, um, do, do we have, uh, the time and, and under the current, um, situation with regard to board meetings? Um, do we have the ability to, uh, post recommendations for, um, John Love and Long Branch and, um, um, where am I? St. Clair Evans and Carter G. Woodson to be voted upon in April?
Through the chair to Board Member Smith-Wares, um, I'm concerned with an April date. Um, these particular public hearing notices require the development of maps and things like that, and, and it's not an easy document to prepare. So that might take a little bit longer than usual. Um, and even if it were perfectly ready this week, we would be looking at the last week of April anyway, uh, in order for enough time to elapse. And I want to remind the board that, um, we're not sure. In your prior action, you said your regular April board meeting would be sometime in the last week of April. That date's not scheduled yet. I mean, there's just a number of issues. So is it, is it possible for the last week of April? I, I suppose it could be, but it would be very challenging to get this accomplished within the prior agenda item waiver of the month of April.
Okay. Thank you for that. I appreciate it. Um, and, and can appreciate that, you know, staff time and energy is, is directed at the most urgent needs right now. Um, and so would ask the board, um, given that we were given a single item with all of these included, um, my concern remains, um, with these changes and especially given the current, um, instruction of our students, that, uh, I would ask the board, uh, if we are able to divide the item and so would, I, I would move to divide the item such that, um, the two, uh, is separated from the, uh, the remainder of items due.
So your, your motion then is to remove the, to separate the two that's already been concluded and, uh, and allow Brentwood-North Shore merger to be delayed until June. Is that correct?
No, no. Um, my, my motion is to, um, divide the item so that, um, the, uh, number two, the two, um, would be separated to become its own item, item three on the agenda, um, so that it could be voted upon separately.
There's a motion by Smith-Wares to separate the two items. Is there a second? Hearing none. That motion dies for a lack of second. Uh, the, the, uh, other item, the contract, I'm sorry, the budget prior to supporting the documentation to ratify. Uh, can you re, ref, do we need to take a, we need to take a... Matt, uh, we need to take a fifteen-minute recess because the conference call were in at ten-thirty. They, they need to reconnect, uh, the three board members, uh, calling in. So we'll take a fifteen-minute recess and, and, uh, reconvene at, uh, ten, ten, ten forty. Otherwise, we're going to lose, we're going to lose the three board members who are called. So do you give us fifteen?
Thank, thank you. Should we, should we stand by for new call-in information?
Board Member Smith-Wares, correct. They're gonna, if you will just go ahead and hang up at this time and then we'll just reconnect with you.
Okay. Same number?
All three members need to hang up and they will reconnect with you.
Correct.
All right. Thank you. Fifteen minutes.
Okay. Thank you.
Taking much is a wonderful thing. I knew we had time.
We now join our regularly scheduled program already in progress.
Communicated protocols for staff who may have been exposed to the virus, if that occurs. We've provided basic health and safety tips, consistent with the Florida Department of Health and CDC. We've created frequently asked questions and posted those on our website. We've also had to provide training for staff who would be working remotely and those managers and supervisors who would be supervising them during that time. We've provided all our communications on COVID-19 and links on our website. We've also created a specific charge code to capture the cost associated with these changes, just in case they become reimbursable from FEMA or another agency. We purchased additional cleaning supplies. We've also enhanced the cleaning of our offices and we have deep cleaning plans for office areas if someone were to be exposed. And lastly, we've identified the essential functions like structures and payroll and have placed backups in case we need to in those areas. I would really like to thank staff. Change is never easy and we make some of these changes daily in response to COVID-19, but they've been very patient and understanding. And their effort goes beyond what our expectations were in that we're able to pretty much run the business as usual, keeping up with our permitting metrics and our contracts and everything as we would if we were all here. So again, I'd like to thank staff for that. Little bit of house cleaning, this being our first board meeting conducted this way. We did receive a blue card from a gentleman named Robert Cameron, but then he hung up and we're unable to get back with him. But he was just speaking to item number 17B and his response was he was just calling in favor of the staff's recommendation. So I thought I would point that out, put him on record for calling in. And then lastly, Chairman, you mentioned that Mr. Rice would not be here due to a death in his family. His father passed, but his father was also a member of the district's governing board. For those of us that had the opportunity to work with Mr. Jerry Rice, you were better for it and you were privileged and thankful for the opportunity to work with that man. He was a leader and I and everyone at the district appreciate what he did for us. Thank you.
Excuse me?
Thanks, Brian.
Excuse me? Excuse me?
We begin to wrap the meeting up. I just want to thank everybody for their patience as we navigate
Excuse me?
Through a totally new process that was developed in a very short notice with lots of changes, even up to like 90 seconds before I hang the gavel. It was a necessary challenge to ensure that we were doing our part to protect the health and safety of the board members, staff, and the public. So thanks to everyone for their roles that they have played. As the chair, I would say that there were two items on the agenda that I I am disappointed that we had to not take up. The first was the Peace River, Minnesota Regional Water Supply Authority report. And the second was the employee recognition. And those are important to me because I want to make sure that everybody knows we can make a list of all the essential items that we're involved with, whatever they would be. But if water is not the top one on that list, you've missed something. And so we need to make sure that we recognize those water supply authorities, the other people that are involved with water, including our district, the support staff that makes that happen. So I would just say, hold on just a minute. We are, I would just say thank you for all of that. Hold on one minute.
Sorry, Mr. Chair. There has been something of a little bit of glitch. Mr. Cameron is on the phone. He's been trying to speak, but apparently we can't hear him.
Okay. All right. So for those, we're working on the technologically advanced system and we have 17B. We may need to reconsider that item. So bear with me for just a minute. Okay. Mr. Cameron, we apologize for the difficulty that you're having, but we understand you have some comment on item 17B. Mr. Cameron? Hello? Robert Cameron, is that the thing? Yes.
Mr. Cameron? Ms. West, would it be possible for us to reach out to Mr. Cameron and take his comments and provide them to the board?
Yes. Yes. I'm not sure why. It's not clear whether he's still on the phone. He was previously and apparently had spoken several times. Some of the folks could hear him, but we could not.
Mr. Cameron?
Should we reconsider?
What I would suggest is we'll reach out to Mr. Cameron, get his comments, and then provide them to the board members individually so that they can see what he was attempting to communicate.
Oh, he's no longer on?
Um, could I?
He's no longer on the phone?
Yeah. So let me, let me just ask Ms. West.
Could I?
Hold on, Ms. Williamson, one second. Just hold on one minute. So Robert's Rules of Order provides that the prevailing side can reconsider a motion. If we decided to do that, and you have to help me with the state statute because Robert's Rules of Order is one standard we go by, but state statute is another. If we were to reconsider based on some public input that Mr. Cameron would have, could we do that at a future meeting or should we do that now? And then possibly?
I think under the circumstances, he was calling about the consent order. My understanding is he was the subject of that consent order and it was explained to him that the consent order resolves the complaint of flooding that had been.
We now join our regularly scheduled program already in progress.
Board Member Anderson, are you present?
Yes.
Smith-Warres, are you present? Board Member Willie, are you present?
I'm here.
I'm sorry. I am here as well. I think I was muted.
Okay.
Exactly.
All right. Everybody's present again. Thank you. The next item was the ratification of the budget prior to supporting documentation. Smith-Warres, you had a question about that item?
Um, yes. I would like to request that before including this portion to four, that the board receives some supporting documentation as to what the financial impact of this particular ratification would be and how those resources were deployed. I would echo the comments that I've heard from other board members as I, you know, have reached out to the superintendent, you know, thought about the decisions that are being made, that kind of thing. This is really just in the best interest of governance and in the interest of working as a team and having all eyes on the documentation as necessary for the board to move forward. So would ask that, I guess I would choose to strike four and ask that the superintendent bring this back to us once we've had a chance to review the supporting documentation.
Strike item four?
I'm sorry. It's two, B, four.
Two, B, four.
Oh, I'm sorry. It is not. It's two, C.
For purposes of clarification, is it the paragraph that starts off with the underlined word budget?
Yes, two, C.
The school board ratifies the prior actions taken by the superintendent based on directives from the Florida Department of Education and the Office of the Governor. That's the portion you want. You want that paragraph removed? Is that correct?
Yeah, just in so much as, you know, we received the supporting documentation as to the budget implications and then I'd be fine with bringing it back.
Comments?
I'm not real clear, Board Member Smith-Warres, on what you're asking specifically. Is there a way you could kind of concise that and so that I understand? I'm uncomfortable striking it. Just can you rephrase what you're requesting?
Um, give me one second to read through the language again because I know this is not all of us. Just give me 15 seconds. Okay. Thank you, Board Member Hershey, for the clarification because what I am actually proposing to strike from two, C, the paragraph titled budget is really just the first sentence. The school board ratifies the prior actions taken by the superintendent based on directives from the Florida Department of Education and the Office of the Governor in the expenditures of lawfully appropriated funds in response to the COVID-19 emergency. I'm asking that we strike that first sentence with a request for documentation of the financial implications of the decisions made to date. And then I would be fine with bringing it back once we have the supporting documentation.
Can I ask?
Board Member Hershey?
Through the chair, I don't know if this is to the superintendent or to Ms. Chastain, but if we do not approve this or if we strike that first sentence, is that going to impact the daily function of the district in any way during this time?
Through the chair to Board Member Hershey, I do not believe it impacts because the first sentence is based on something that already happened. And to date, as I stated, I am not, I do not believe we have made any expenditures that weren't in my legal authority to make or in the legal authority of current board policy on what purchases can be made. The only comment I would make is that the first sentence is in something that has already happened. It's based on the last three, I guess it's the last three weeks of anything we purchased in the last three weeks.
So it doesn't undo what's already been done. It just removes the ratification date?
Yes.
Well, through the chair, if anything needs to be ratified, I think what Dr. Green has said on multiple occasions is that district staff has endeavored to stay within existing board policies and existing authority. So this could be nothing.
Would it impact if? So it's my understanding that Board Member Smith-Warres just wants to strike the first sentence but keep the rest? Or did you want to not approve item C in this section?
No, I'm not, yes. So to be clear, I am proposing that we strike the first sentence and retain the remainder of budget. And if the superintendent needs to bring something back to the board, would be open to her doing that with the supporting documentation at the appropriate time. I'd remind the board that, you know, we routinely, you know, look at unaudited financials, approved, you know, amendments and other things that come to us, but we do have the supporting documentation along with those. And so out of respect to the superintendent, having the time to be able, and staff having the time to be able to go back and catalog those things and look at what, if anything, they need to come to the board as well as the board's constitutional and primary duties towards budget. You know, would ask that we just strike the first sentence and maintain the remainder of the paragraph.
So that's your motion to strike the first sentence and keep the rest of the verbiage as indicated in item C?
Correct.
I would second that.
All right. We have a motion and a second to remove the first sentence of the budget item. Any more discussion? If not, call for your vote. Anderson?
Yes.
Grimes?
Yes.
Hershey?
Yes.
Jones, yes. Joyce?
Yes.
Smith-Warres?
Yes.
Board Member Willie?
Yes.
About your action, you removed the first sentence? And the last item that you brought was the work from home. That's not included in the?
Mr. Chairman, I think?
Yeah, no, that.
Oh, that's it? Okay.
Yeah, the work from home was done at your last meeting. That's already done.
All right.
Mr. Chairman, if that was a question to me, I didn't have, based on Ms. Chastain's explanation, did not have a recommendation for change to this section, but more so had a question. I do, it did, however, her explanation raised to me an additional question as we looked at section one, based on the federal, state of Florida and local declarations of emergency presented by the spread of COVID-19. The board recognizes the need during the health emergencies to delegate authority and so on. Understanding that we are constitutional officers, whereas our, you know, city counterparts of differing authority, the inclusion of local declarations of emergency through the chair to legal, is it possible that by that inclusion, we could be foregoing or submitting some of our authority as constitutional officers to the city of Jacksonville that would not be warranted? I can't imagine that this would happen, but an example that I can think of is if the local authority declared that we could no longer distribute meals on our buses. Would we want to, you know, maintain constitutional authority to do that if we felt like the advice that we were getting, maintain safety by doing that? I'm not saying that that's happening. It's just something, you know. I can't, I think a lot of us are having a hard time ideating what could possibly happen in all of this. But I guess the base question through the chair to the two legal is by including local declarations of emergencies, could we be foregoing some of our authority as constitutional officers to make judicious decisions in the best interest of the public and the school district?
Through the chair to Board Member Smith-Warres, yes, if that authority is, for example, a quarantine. That quarantine would apply to everybody regardless of your status as a constitutional officer. So that's what I was thinking in terms of the police power of the federal, state, and local governments to protect the health, safety, welfare. If there is a determination that social distancing isn't working, gatherings of 10 or fewer isn't working, if notwithstanding the closures of bars and restaurants and all the things that have happened so far, if there are further measures such as New Rochelle, New York, with the National Guard in place, yes, there could be a superior authority based on their police power and the health, safety, welfare. If it's something like your example and in the absence of some police power and health, safety, welfare, I'd say potentially no, but is there a possibility that there could be a local determination which frankly would be supported by the state and federal and aligned? Yes. This is all very fact-specific and so we would have to see.
Okay. So I guess, and I think I'm following you, but I'm not certain that I'm following you. What I would not like to do through this emergency delegation of authority and waiver of policy is to hamper the superintendent's ability to make decisions in the best interest of the public and of the school district. That would be out, that's how I would say that, exactly. So if we would have the authority to make decisions as constitutional officers, I don't want to withdraw that authority to other local governments by this particular item. Is that, is that making, I'm not sure that I'm being clear here. Because the example, understanding that state and federal would certainly supersede our authority. But I think it's the locals where there are some authorities that we hold as constitutional officers and other authorities that the city of Jacksonville holds.
Through the chair to Board Member Smith-Warres, the purpose of this is not to cede whatever authority that the school board has, but it's also to recognize that other agencies may have superior powers in times of emergency.
Okay. So would the city of Jacksonville have a superior power in this kind of emergency?
Through the chair to Board Member Smith-Warres, I don't think the city of Jacksonville acts without consultation with state Department of Health, just like the school board does. I haven't seen anything that any agency has acted in a manner that oversteps its boundaries.
I hear what you're saying and also respectfully understand that, you know, you are employees of the city of Jacksonville. I guess through the chair to the superintendent, are you comfortable with this particular language as it would define your authority decision for the best interest of the public and the school district?
Through the chair to Ms. Smith-Warres, yes, ma'am. As I stated yesterday, the mayor put out the executive order and I, we had our conversation and it became evident that we know that we have to collaborate during these uncharted waters. And he said, "Dr. Green, whoever you need to work at your places of work, you need to let them work there." So I am comfortable.
Does that answer your question?
Sorry, I'm taking another 15 seconds to read the language again. I'm just getting familiarized with a lot of this. I'll defer to other members if they have question or comment.
Thank you. Vice Chair Anderson, any questions or comments before we vote?
No, sir.
Board Member Willie, any questions or comments?
I'm good. I appreciate the conversation once again.
Any sitting board members? We have a motion and a second. And with the changes from monthly to bi-weekly. And?
Strike from the first sentence.
And strike in the first sentence in the ratification language. Seeing no other comments, I call for your vote.
We've already done the?
We've already done the amendments. We're voting on the emergency authority delegation as amended.
Yes, sir. Would you like me to go through the amendments that you've approved so far?
Yes, please do that.
The duration of the waiver and the delegation of authority is changed from the end of the COVID-19 emergency to add or June 30th, whichever occurs first. The next amendment is changing the frequency of reporting from the superintendent from monthly to bi-weekly with the first report being due April 10th. And there's a one-week lag, so it would cover the period through April 3. It's not in exactly real time. The next amendment is for existing contracts where the superintendent would be delegated authority to amend existing contracts that were previously approved by the board, in other words, delegating that authority. Presently at 10% or less of the fiscal cost, you added or $100,000, whichever is less. So it's 10% or $100,000, whichever is less. And then the last amendment is deleting the first sentence and the budget paragraph. And then the last amendment is deleting the first sentence in the budget paragraph, which is the ratification of prior actions. And those are the four amendments that you approved.
Any other questions or comments? If not, I call for your vote. Board Member Anderson?
Aye.
Board Member Grimes?
Sorry, but I'm not sure, can you, can you tell us what we're voting on?
We're voting on the emergency delegation of authority and waivers of school board policies during COVID-19. We had a motion and a second and we had the four amendments that.
That have been passed, so.
That's already been passed.
The motion on the floor is the item as amended four times.
So, okay, so. I guess I would like for the superintendent to weigh in on it.
Through the chair to Ms. Grimes, the fourth, the item that you're voting on is, is in the condition that we went through those amendments and we agreed to those amendments. And so now you're just voting to, here's now the whole item with those four amendments. I'm comfortable with the amendments.
She's comfortable.
I am comfortable with the amendments.
I think that's what she.
Okay.
All right, yes.
Grimes, yes. Hershey?
Yes.
Jones, yes. Joyce?
Yes.
Smith Juarez?
Yes, I'm sorry, I was on mute.
Board Member Willie?
Yes.
By your asking, you've adopted the emergency item. Seven to zero. Anything for governance?
I have a few items, Chair Jones.
Board Member, Vice Chair Anderson, go ahead.
Thank you. As Board Member Hershey alluded to, I would be able to join in on the 11:30 FSBA call on Friday. So I was also prepared some discussions surrounding emergency policy. And so I'm wondering to Ms. Chastain, through the chair to Ms. Chastain, are we still looking at developing an emergency crisis policy?
Through the chair to Vice Chairman Anderson, I think as far as the policy, we should look at your existing policy 3.27, where you presently have delegated to the superintendent broad powers during an emergency. What it didn't really contemplate though, it's that these times are unprecedented compared to prior times. I think it's been said, a hurricane comes and goes and it has a concrete beginning and a concrete end. This present situation doesn't, it's ongoing, and so trying to balance the frequency of reporting with the duration, the length of the COVID-19, your policy 3.27 didn't really fit. And so that was one of the things that you've done today in your agenda item, is that by bi-weekly reporting from the superintendent, that doesn't end the superintendent's powers under the emergency. You're recognizing that the situation is ongoing. Does that make sense?
Sure, I think that makes sense, you know, for now in this situation. But I do think that it seems reasonable to look at either creating a 3.28 or some addendum to the policy in order to include for circumstances like this where you would address some of the items that I know you and I discussed or that Board Member Hershey also brought up in her email. And so I'd like to consider looking at something like that moving forward for the future. And in addition to that, I think that as we go through all of the steps and all of the procedures that we have had to put in place to deal with this current pandemic crisis, I'm wondering if the district is working on putting anything like a procedural manual, sort of a, you know, in case of emergency break glass situation, kind of in writing, a step by step, do this, do that. Is that something that we are looking at, kind of documenting as we go or do we have personnel or staff available to help us put that in writing somewhere? Dr. Green to the chair?
Through the chair to Ms. Anderson, we've already started that process. We have a teacher handbook so that teachers know what is the expectation of their, doing their job in this new virtual environment. And now that many of our employees will be working remotely, we are implementing an employee handbook to help support employees to understand what are the expectations, what are the requirements. But I'm not completely sure I'm answering everything you're asking, but our number one priority right now is making sure all of our employees know that they are supported in working from, I say home, we say remotely because remotely. But we also want to make sure that they understand the expectations of that. And I don't count it as a privilege, but of this new circumstance.
Sure, I appreciate that. I guess I'm thinking specifically in terms of when we might go into, you know, in the future, another circumstance where we would need to just shut down operations and move learning to a home or virtual setting for distance, you know, distance education. Ms. Chastain brought up the concept of a hurricane and luckily we've been fortunate enough to close for a set number of days. But in the occasion that perhaps we had a hurricane where we were not able to reopen, and we did need to make some alternative changes to our classroom environment or setting perhaps in a distant learning environment, I think that it would be helpful to put the steps in place as far as, you know, contacting or communicating with our community partner, getting our meals in place, how to keep people employed or working and productive through these times in a procedural way, a little bit different than just the handbook for home learning for a staff person. And I'm thinking in terms of putting together a policy, there would maybe be adjustments 3.27, that this would be something we could reference in that policy. Again, sort of an extended distance learning in case of emergency manual.
Well, I think we have ever, quite frankly, we've already put it in place. It's not something, oh, like a hurricane, you tear it down and then put it back together. It is now solidified. We have the ability to go virtual anytime. It could be one school burned down and the students can't go to that school. We already have our virtual platform in place that that one school could go virtual. But we could work on looking at, I guess, a procedural guide right now. We are sort of chronicling our journey, but I don't believe it is in a format that we would say, oh, that's our documentation.
Sure, and I think that, I'm glad to hear that we are chronicling because I think that that would maybe be something that we can then look at after we get through, after we get through the crisis. I think again, as everyone has said, I mean, the hero's work that you are doing is absolutely incredible. And I'm so impressed with it, which is why should we lose you or the other team members for the future of Duval County Public Schools, I'd love for us to be able to have some place to refer to that says, these are the systems that we put in place, this is the process and the procedure that we follow. And as we tweak and hone it along the way, distributing out laptops and what do we need to consider and think about? I think that those are really important things to be documenting as we move along. So I appreciate those efforts, you know, should we find ourselves in a situation, you know, God willing, we don't, where we would have to move to distance learning again, it would be helpful to have this documented and recorded.
All right, thank you. Any other governance items? Board Member Smith Juarez?
No, thank you, Chairman.
Board Member Willie?
Aye.
I'm sorry, is that Anderson?
Yes, I'm sorry, I had a, just a couple other quick little things.
Okay, I'm sorry, go ahead.
How, as the governor has listed requirement for us to meet in person, do we have any more information about how we will plan to proceed with virtual meetings or video conferencing capability?
We, we are looking at that and we're preparing to meet virtually going after the day, we had to waive the policy. Ms. Chastain, you want to respond to that?
Through the chair to Vice Chairman Anderson, I don't know what the district is using as far as technology for, you know, to hold a virtual meeting in place of a in-person meeting. I think Dr. Green can provide that information, she has her hand up. And then as far as public comment, I believe the district is establishing an email portal that says something like publiccomment@duvolschools.org. And that when the meeting notice goes up, there will be, and I mentioned this earlier, so this is what I'm referring to, when your meeting notice is posted, instead of saying that there'll be a special board meeting in the client auditorium, it'll say there will be a special board meeting conducted through communication media technology. Here is how you dial in or here is where you go to watch. And if you have public comment, the notice will have instructions as to where the speaker would send his or her comments in writing. And I believe that we will then read them aloud during the virtual meeting and then those public comments will become part of the record. That exhausts my knowledge of the details.
Through the chair. Through the chair to the board, we've established go-to meeting. We will have that set up prior to the next official or special board meeting. And we are developing a email portal where individuals can make public comment through the email portal and we be able to submit it in the record.
Vice Chair Anderson, did you understand?
Yes, thank you, I appreciate that information. Do we have any idea or anticipated plans for when we might be next or what we would anticipate coming up? I know we have suspended our regular April meeting. What happens next as far as meeting of the board?
Once we get a notification from the superintendent that we need a meeting, then we would put out the notice for the meeting. All meetings have been suspended through April the 30th except for emergency meetings as this one is. Madam Superintendent?
Through the chair, I will be requesting an emergency meeting before the end of April. We, we already had April's agenda prepared and then, then this happened. And there are items that have to be approved in the month of April. And I'll just tell you instructional materials. April is generally the time we are requesting to purchase instructional materials to begin the, so that we can get that order into the textbook depository so that we can ensure that we have textbooks for the beginning of next school year.
So yes, we will be having an emergency meeting this month. I'm sorry, April, not this month, we've already had a meeting, thank you.
Thank you, I appreciate that. And then finally, and someone, I might be able to get back with someone on this, but it just crossed my attention that Fletcher High School, many of the students at Fletcher High School have ACE testing. And there is some concern that because Cambridge, the ACE program is a Cambridge program, it's global, they will not be making any adjustments to their testing schedule. And I'm wondering if we can maybe put this on our radar and someone else can follow up with me or with Fletcher to make sure that we have, you know, some services in place to make sure these students are available and able to take these exams, since many of them rely on these exams to help with things like obtaining a bright future scholarship.
Madam Superintendent?
Through the chair to Ms. Anderson, we are working with the Department of Education and each of these organizations. IB has already put out there what they are doing and this morning we just received what is happening with AP. So DOE is the entity working with each of these organizations and we've shared with them that we need to know as quickly as possible what's the decision. So right now districts are relying on the Department of Education because that is the way, that is the protocol they've set up to communicate with these accelerated programs.
Okay, I appreciate that update. I do know that the communication so far from ACE is that they are not making adjustments to their testing and they'll proceed as expected. So that's just something to put on our radar for the district staff to help our schools and our students navigate. I'm looking at my list here. The only other thing that I had on my list is technology equipment or the potential for students that maybe are 18 and that are not living with parents, that are emancipated, and their ability to be able to get technology equipment. Is that something that we can consider? I think of the survey, ask for parents to provide a lot of input and to have communication. So if we could maybe take a look at how we might be able to attend to those students that might not have parents, I would appreciate that.
Superintendent?
Through the chair to Ms. Anderson, any student with 18 or whether they are able to represent themselves, if they completed the survey and they got their invitation, they were able to receive technology. We are opening it up to more students starting Wednesday and they, they again, all they have to have is their student ID and know their student ID number.
Great, thank you so much, I'll pass on that information. And I don't want to go without saying, what a fantastic, incredible, amazing job you all have done getting this rolled out, it's really impressive.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. Anything else? I just want to, go ahead.
I just wanted to see if Dr. Green could, while we're here and we're all meeting together, could give us an, you know, an update as to school personnel, for example. I know there's pairs and there's deaf-hearted hearing teachers. And so can we, you give the board some information on how we're utilizing all of the different non-essential, like non-teachers in our school buildings?
Through the chair to Ms. Joyce and the board. We've gone through pretty much every job category and if they were not teaching virtually, assigned sort of duties for those individuals. So when we look at paraprofessionals, they are there to support teachers. So if I'm in my classroom and two students have not checked in, the parent has the responsibility of calling the homes of those, those, calling home to find out, why haven't you checked in? Or if a teacher gives their parent, I have two students that need help with their math paper. That parent calls that student and again, provides support over the phone. We actually have our deans working inside teams. We've actually had discipline issues that we, the deans literally call the home and talk with the parent. This is an issue, we had one yesterday. Our guidance counselors at the high school, their job is to call every senior. Yes, the end of course testing has been waived, but you still have to have a 2.0 and 24 credits. So they're ensuring, they're doing grad checks, our high school guidance counselors. Our guidance counselors in the middle schools, they're doing what we call credit checks. These are students who are behind, you need to call and make sure that they understand that even though we've gotten all these waivers, you still have to pass that course. Or next year, you will, you will have to retake it if you don't pass. Our, some other positions, they are there helping with packet distribution. So yesterday I rode on a bus, I was at Amy. So yesterday, I rode on a bus, I was at Amy Agnes Jones Elementary. Uh, we went in places I've never seen before, uh, and my cellphone did not work.
Right on.
And so, um, we wanted to experience what it would be like, and we just, we distribute packets for elementary students who may not have the technology yet, and food, and so individuals are either working, uh, remotely, being able to make phone calls, or, um, the schools have very strict guidelines. Uh, one parent in a classroom, you, you don't need any, if you're on the phone, you don't need anyone else in that classroom to ensure that we are implementing our social distancing. So, we've worked really hard to identify every position and, and what might be a new set of job description guidelines for those individuals.
Well, I want to thank you for that. Um, I was a little familiar with some of those items that you've put in place, and I am so impressed with the work and how everybody's come together. Um, I actually experienced this yesterday. My son is being virtual schooled, home, I call it homeschool, I know. That's probably not politically correct for some people. I know, homeroom, e-learning, homeschool, whatever. Um, I was so impressed with the, um, scheduling and the teachers, and even, even the teachers that are not tech savvy have really come along and just worked so hard, at least to communicate through, um, a, a chat and post an assignment, and then you have teachers that are just face-to-face, that are, they're, they're teaching on, and the students can see them, a lot of good positive comments coming back. And I know we are engaging in a whole new world, but I want to commend you for the job and the, you and the district and the teachers and how everybody's come along to make this work. And I know there's kinks, we'll get that worked out, but I am just really, really proud of this district.
Chairman, may I add something to that? Paula Remfro and her team really have been working twenty-four seven. Um, after the training on Friday, we had a help session, Q and A session, and had forty-seven hundred teachers engaged in that session on Saturday. Um, teachers are collaborating with one another. I think we ignited some teachers that said, you know, I never would have used this technology if you had not forced us into the- well, I didn't force you into it, this situation forced us into it. Uh, our principals, I was talking to a principal yesterday, and he said, oh, Dr. Green, I was doing my rounds. He was checking in through teams.
I've heard that too, yes.
They can literally see into the classroom. And so I brought that up because there seems to be, uh, one little issue, some parents want our teachers to be able to use Zoom. Our teachers cannot use Zoom because Zoom is, we can't track it, we can't log it, we can't monitor it. We still have the same, eh, things of concern to make sure we protect our teachers. You don't want some conversation to be had and someone is accusing you of something, and now we're, we're using a device that we cannot access, we cannot able to track it. And so we have those face-to-face conferencing tools inside of Teams. Uh, and it just, Zoom is very easy to use, you just say call a number and then people will show up. But, um, we, we are directing teachers, hey, this is how you can use conferencing inside of Teams. I know you want to see your students and you can. At the beginning, we did turn that feature off. Being able to see inside someone's home, this is, we just felt we needed, hey, let's start a little slow. If we, now we can turn that feature back on to, for you to be able to see your students and your students to be able to see you. But, eh, that's why we needed to develop the teacher handbook because still, if you see something that could be considered inappropriate, you still have the requirement to report. And that, so that's why we've, we've tried to take little baby steps, and now everybody's excited and they're just like, take off the, um, training wheels, and we're like, well, can we take off one? And let's hold on to the other one.
Oh my gosh.
And then we'll, then we'll get there, but, um, we, we are very appreciative.
Hey, hold on, Board Member Willie. Superintendent, does she finish? Finished?
Yes.
Board Member Joyce?
I just want to again congratulate the district.
Board Member Willie?
No, I mean, I'm willing to say it firsthand, I mean, I was up at eight-thirty before our call, and my daughter was talking to a teacher, a teacher after I was playing break, and what she did yesterday, the first day, and it was just, it was a, it was an impressive time to be able to sit and watch them interact. My daughter was talking to other classmates, you could hear them, and they're asking each other questions in their morning meetings. So, I, I think that this is a great opportunity for us, I think, to sort of turn that page and, and figure out how to, uh, get to that sort of next echelon that comes to interactive learning. And we're doing it. I mean, the, the students are doing it, the teachers are doing it, and I think it's, we're growing a lot. And I'm just impressed, um, with the staff, with, with putting so much effort into it, and the teachers for embracing it and kind of diving headfirst. So just congrats to all involved.
Alright, thank you, Board Member Willie. Uh, anyone else? Board Member Grimes?
Um, I too want to just say that y'all have just done it, um, eh, as well as anyone could. And I know that when all of this is said and done, we're, we are going to be the star, uh, star, um, district. So, beware, um.
Hope not a burning star.
A bright shining star.
Of course, I'm not the, I'm not the, um, teacher, I'm not a teacher, so I can't even imagine how that really works. But, um, I, I think with all of the things that are going around us, um, and, um, the fact that we are really kind of in a good place, even though we have things that are going around us. And, um, I certainly have to, um, recognize you as the leader of all of that because that's what makes it, it go. And, um, I really, really appreciate what you have done, and I hope one day that you get a full night's sleep. Um, but it's, um, in, on the end, we're going to be, we're going to be the, the child that did it.
Thank you. And I too want to thank Dr. Green and her staff for the outstanding job they did. She's very hands-on, because when I went to Reval on Saturday, she was busy signing up students for her computers and Vicky Schultz and Snead Young and all the staff did a wonderful job, and I really appreciate it. These are uncharted times for this city and this country, but, uh, I think we have the staff and creativity on board to make, um, something bad lemon, lemon, lemonade out of lemons. So I just want to thank you for that. Dr. Green?
Chairman Jones, uh, do need to say, yesterday, we distributed over five thousand laptops, and not a single person got out of their car. And that was attributed to Director Edwards, working with JSO, uh, ensuring that you can imagine five thousand cars coming through five locations, and not a single person got out of their car. Uh, and, just amazing, and we're doing another five thousand today.
Now, where were they, um, to do, to pick up the, the-
They were at five different schools.
Okay.
Uh, First Coast High School probably was the star. Uh, they had six lines going, and because they, high schools have much bigger parking lots, First Coast, um, delivered thirteen hundred itself. And they did it between two, from, they started at, um, one forty-five and finished at, um, five forty-five.
Hello, this is Erica.
Who was that?
This is Erica, who's this?
I think you got the wrong number. This is Duval County School Board Meeting, thank you. We, we, we passed public comment this time. Uh, anything else to come before this board? If not, is that a motion?
I'm ready for adjournment.
Motion by Board Member Hershey, second by Board Member Anderson, Joyce, all in favor?
Aye.
Alright, pause, needs adjourned. Erica, you can go.
Erica.
Can have it, maybe when we went over it and they were happy. I hope somebody is, um, telling the story.